Oh, something come on up Tony. I believe you'll be able to get all of us in there if you can go back about a foot more.
Nick, we have three of them right now.
We'll have to go back a little more if it's hard than that.
Did you get them all?
It's live.
You're live.
We're up.
He needs to go back a little more.
Audio is up.
Everything's working.
All right, I'm going to take it off.
Are we back up?
Back up.
Okay, it's one o'clock. Again, we're in Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, regular session in the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. Commissioners, you got minutes in front of you. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Normally at this time we do the public testimony. I know we've had a few comments earlier, but we're going to wait just a little while and give everyone a time to email a question or a phone number. You can go to huntcounty.net and go to the question banner and you can send a question to us or a comment or a phone number and we'll call you back at the appropriate time and you can address the court under new business. Action item number one, certificate of completion from -- oh, excuse me, that's consent calendar. What am I doing? Consent calendar, commissioners. Entertain motion for approval of consent calendar.
So moved.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, resolution extending and/or modifying the April 28th, 2020 COVID-19 related resolution in social distancing guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Daniel?
You have in your packet in front of you the resolution for today. This is the same resolution as the past six meetings, it just has different dates and will go for two weeks, starting tonight at midnight.
Okay. Got any questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, resolution adopting noise ordinance standards for portions of Lake Tewocanee within Hunt County.
I asked the judge to pull this off the agenda because in consultation with our trade group, Texas Association of Counties, it was pointed out to me that there's already a nuisance item in the penal code, which is not a code that I have a lot of experience with, but there in your packets in front of you, there's penal code section 42.01, disorderly conduct, and basically it's already illegal to make the noise that has been the source of a few complaints over the past couple of months. Basically, in the Hunt County portion of Lake Tewocanee, there are some areas where people are taking boats with loud, unmuffled engines and disturbing the peace down there. Their decibels from their motors have been measured from the shore with a decibel meter reader to be well over 100 decibels, which is very, very loud, and that's from hundreds of feet away. This penal code section that you have in front of you basically allows an officer to give a ticket to anyone who is making that kind of noise, as long as they do it on or in or near a private residence that they have no right to occupy. The place where this is occurring, places where this is occurring are aligned on the shore with residences. The boat owners do not have the right to occupy all of those residences if they have the right to occupy any of them. And so my suggestion in the court today would be to allow me to talk with the sheriff about enforcing this. I'll probably have to purchase some decibel meter readers because if you look in the last section, C2, the noise is presumed to be unreasonable if it exceeds 85 decibels. There's not going to be any question about it exceeding 85 decibels. I think the last reading that I saw was over 130, which is very similar to being right under a 747 when it lands. It's extremely loud. Greenville and Will City, I know for sure, already have some similar standards to this. Theirs are 80 decibels, which is still very loud. State law here says 85, and so the, my suggestion would be to use this penal code section first and if for whatever reason that doesn't work, then to come back and adopt a noise resolution with more specific requirements.
Okay, and I hope the court will support it. That I think we ought to support the sheriff with all the equipment he needs to enforce this to help our citizens around the lake to enjoy their property where they, several of them have pretty expensive homes and have the right to enjoy their place without being interrupted by these loud boats. So what do we need to support the sheriff? We need to do it.
Judge, I agree with you in reference to this totally. I believe something needs to be done. I believe park and wildlife needs to come in and do it, in my opinion, as far as enforcement of it. That's my own, that's my own feeling. They ought to be willing to enforce this law.
I agree, but at this time they say they're not willing to do that. So we're going to, we're going to strike this one from the agenda. We're going to move on. We've already handled action item number three. Action item number four, the request to upgrade approximately 1,584 feet of County Road 4112 from dirt to rock, precinct four.
Make a motion for approval of 1,584 feet of County Road 4112 from dirt to rock. Money is in escrow.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 2737 in precinct two.
Make a motion, we approve this request, electrical power distribution under County Road 212737, unusual stipulations.
Second.
You got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, we had any comments?
Now, let me press refresh again real quick.
Ryan, do we know if this Mr. Whitford on the next agenda is calling in or did he write a letter or anything?
He sent a letter in.
Did we get that in our packet? I don't remember seeing it. Okay, action item number six, the request of appearance of Whitford addition on County Road 2586 because of the lack of road furniture in precinct two.
There's no further comments.
Okay.
Guys, what we've got is we've got a plat that was submitted ultimately, and one of the lots only has 150 feet of road furniture on Highway 276. The lot is seven and a half. The lot is seven and a half acres or so, so it requires 275 feet. These people have acquired a lot that's slightly less than an acre, that has the 150 feet of road furniture. The remaining part of the track to be subdivided is, sits behind the other lot on the plat. So one lot has county road furniture, all of the county road furniture. The other is going to be combined, or they're requesting to combine it with the less than one acre track to give it 150 feet of furniture. So they're ultimately asking for a variance from 275 feet to 150 feet. I believe their intent is to put in some sort of a commercial business of some sort. I don't know if they're going to build gates or what. I believe that's what the gentleman does who's purchasing the property.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Well, you know, my problem with this is that Mr. Whitford owned the 10-acre track north of Lot 1 and 2 and sold it several years ago with no problems. He has a tracker record in the, what is now Lot, the large part of Lot 1 and Lot 2, and could sell that as a 10-acre track, just as he did the other track. He went late last year and purchased almost one acre to get access into the other one. So he has two legal tracks right now, and what he's asking us to do is to create one illegal track now. And I have a problem with that. I think there's houses around it. I know we can't do zoning, but I certainly don't want to be part of approving a variance in a plat to allow somebody to come in and put in a subdivision that does not meet our old subdivision rules, nor does it meet our current subdivision rules, just for the benefit of somebody making a little extra money.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The information you just gave me, he actually owned the property north of that?
Yes.
And then divided it up and left it like this?
Well, now, he actually bought, if you look at the plat above it, it says, "Call 10-Acre Track Craig Whitford to Jonathan Van Buskerk," and that was sold a long time ago. But he bought two 10-acre tracks, and he sold one of them off. And he's still got this 10-acre track that he's owned for a long, or it's 9.87 or whatever it is, but it's a little less than 10 acres. He's owned that for a number of years, which he could have sold it as a 10-acre track and had no problems. But he recently went and bought this piece so that he could get frontage to his other piece, but he didn't get it, he doesn't buy enough frontage. If he wants to go buy enough frontage, then we'll have no choice but to approve his plat. But he seeks a variance at this time, and I just don't, I think we'll be setting a bad example on some of the others we've turned down and all, if we allow this to go through.
He still owns that north, or he sold it?
He sold it many years ago. That volume and page, that's five, six, eight years ago, ten maybe? Been quite a while.
So in actuality, he put himself in this position?
Yes, no question about it. He created the problem recently. He created, I don't blame him. He's trying to make a little extra money on the deal that makes that back piece, but he's got to follow the rules. He needs to buy more land. Entertain a motion. Hearing none, it fails for lack of a motion. Action item number seven will be tabled because it, same thing. I guess it struck because that was a duplicate really of the previous one. Action item number eight, the final plat for Hopeful Estates in precinct one. Any comments?
Certainly simple subdivision, guys.
The owner owns the other property around it. He's leaving himself plenty of frontage. This is a pretty simple deal with ample frontage and everything in place.
He's got plenty of frontage on the rest of his property?
Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, the final plat of Jake Kill addition in precinct three.
Here again, this is actually a family-to-family division that was done several years ago, and now the son that got this piece has decided that he wants to sell it. So we're requiring him to plat, per the subdivision rules, stating that a family-to-family division doesn't have to be platted until it stops being owned by family, at which time it has to be platted. So he's, he's getting this platted so he can sell it. It's got all the frontage it needs, and the remaining track does as well, so.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, we still don't have any comments?
No.
Approval of counts payable?
Make a motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion for approval of budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion for approval of payroll personnel.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We, do we need any other executive session? We got it all done? Okay. Again, I'd like to apologize to the citizens for the mix-up today. Apparently, a storm damaged our electronics up here and lost our video feed, so our 10:00 meeting had to be postponed, and I thank Gabe for, with friendly coming up here and filling in for us and giving us the opportunity to have our meeting today that we needed to have, and thankful for everybody's patience with us, and we try to make sure this doesn't all happen again. And with that, if there's no other business before the court, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All opposed say aye. Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned at 1:15. Thank you, everyone.